We'd like to welcome you out to this study session of the Mesa City Council. We hope you're enjoying the spring flowers aroma that we've been providing for you. Our first item on the agenda is to look at our consent agenda for this afternoon. As soon as everybody's fired up and ready to go. Oh, I would like to note that we do have Councilmember Scott Summers who is out of town and will not be calling in today. Our first item, or items on page two, we have the appointment of Vice Mayor and then we have items one through three C. Items three D through three H. Items three I through four B. Items four C through four E. Items four F through four H. Items four I through four K. Items four L through four N. Items four O through four Q. Items four R through four T. Yes, Councilmember Richardson.
Just a quick comment on the River View Multi-Sports Facility. There's been a lot of comments and email about the replacement of the softball fields at River View and just wanted to make sure we got on record that it was an issue we're still trying to work through on the west side to find a... I've been working with Councilmember Glover and with Councilmember Kavanaugh about making sure we find a location on the west side to locate a four-plex softball field so we, at least in some way, remain whole on that issue. But generally, there's a lot of people really excited about these multipurpose fields, a lot of football, lacrosse, soccer-type players, so excited about this project but just want to make sure we got that on the record tonight. Thanks.
Very nice. Thank you, sir. That was item four T. So, four U through five D. As you can tell, a long agenda. Items five E through five J. And items six A through six D. Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Mayor, I know this is only for introduction, but item six C, I know I've expressed my concern to the applicant and our staff on the... in the development of this property there's... as it went through the planning and zoning process, there was the closure of the connections to Princess and Gary Streets and just certainly from my perspective, it creates public safety issue, I think, for the future for both the city and the residents of both neighborhoods by losing that connectivity. And also, it creates challenges for our sanitation trucks, service trucks, meter readers, letter carriers, who are not going to have that connection and take longer to get around to... between these two subdivisions for the services they need. So, you know, whatever happens with this case in the future, I hope resident... I know the residents of the existing subdivision strongly want those connections closed off, but it's... it does create consequences that they will have to live with in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Luna.
Mr. Wesley, maybe you could speak to that. I saw the update that you made recommendations on changing that. Is that correct?
Mayor, councilmembers, with regard to the specific items that Councilmember Kavanaugh brought up and those connections of those streets, staff did recommend that they be connected and the applicant chose not to make their connections because of the interest of the adjacent neighborhood to the west. And so, the final site plan that went to the Planning and Zoning Board did not have those particular connections in them and that's why it's come to you for recommendation. And related matters, there's the connection of the cleton on the north end and that is connected through but in a way that is a little bit more direct than what staff really thinks is appropriate and will cause too much cut-through traffic. So, we are working with the applicant to redesign that connection on the north end. So, there is still the connection so that the children from this area can easily get to the school but not to be quite so direct so that it causes a problem.
Yes, sir. You know, I'm equally concerned about traffic and I'm also equally concerned about fire safety and the refuse going through. Was that done as a result of neighbors complaining about having access there through Norwalk? Do you know?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Luna. The neighbors in the area were concerned about the cut-through traffic that might happen, the existing neighbors to the west, that it would... having the streets open would cause too much of a traffic concern for them. They voiced that concern to the applicant. The applicant then chose to close off those connections. We did raise those similar concerns that Mr. Kavanaugh mentioned about the need for the cross-access for various public safety and service needs, but again, it's come with a recommendation that those not be connected.
And so, this is on the agenda for our introduction this evening. I know we have the applicant and I hear there might be a couple of residents that want to share an opinion, so we'll just see how this proceeds. Do we want to leave it on a consent for now and then...
Mm-hmm.
We'll see if we get blue cards on that upstairs. So, I would say the applicant's attorney may want to be ready to respond to any concerns. Okay, that was item six B. If there's nothing else on that one. Item six C and six D, finishing out that page. Item six E through six H. Item six I through, looks like all the way down to eight B. If there's no others on that, let's see on the back. There, okay. So, that takes care of the consent agenda today for our next meeting review. Next item on the agenda is to hear a presentation and discuss the highlights of Fire and Medical Department. Like to welcome them up. Welcome, Chief Beck. Nice to see you.
Mayor, members of the council, it's nice to be here. Thank you for the opportunity. With me today is Tara Acuna, who is our new Management Services Division Head. Is this for me?
Right. There you go. Took care of that. Right. That was kind of... Don't worry. Wonderful.
No, it's not us. No pepperoni.
Okay. Feel free, chief.
As I was saying.
Right.
It's nice to be with you today to give you a brief update. As I reviewed our presentation, it occurred to me that, you know, we spend an awful lot of time together talking about the processes involved in providing the service, but I thought as an update it would be good to give you guys some information about actual service delivery that we experienced in 2013. So, just some very... just some highlights for that. We Mesa Fire and Medical responded on 55,915 emergencies last year. Forty-five thousand, almost 55,000 of those were emergency medical. And of those, we worked more than one cardiac code each day. Two-hundred-and-sixty-nine working codes during that period of time, so that's quite a few lives we had in our hands during this past year. We responded to over 9,000 fires and other emergencies and of those, 374 of those were working fires. So, again, we had more than one working fire, structured fire, each day on average through the year. And then, with our specialty programs, the TRVs themselves responded on 12,000 or 1,279 calls. Someday, I'd like it to be 12,000, but right now, 1,279 with an additional 1,000 calls for our nurse practitioner unit and an additional 823 calls for our behavioral health unit for a total of 3,056 calls for our TRV program, which, as you know from previous presentations, that is considered a very heavy workload for an engine company throughout a year. So, that program is still kicking along, doing nicely. Tara is going to give you some information here on the next couple of slides and then I'll join you here in a minute.
Thank you, Chief Beck. Mayor and council, I first wanted to update you on some of the efficiencies in our department. We were just able to sign into a second five-year contract with Pierce for apparatus and our repair parts. The first five-year savings, our actual savings, were 1.6 million for the apparatus and 98,000 for the repairs and parts. And for the second contract, our expected savings are 1.7 million for apparatus and 100,000 for parts. I wanted to talk to you also a little bit about some innovative practices that we've had that have... that we've realized cost savings and been able to fund some of the programs that were either minimized or cut in the past. We've recently added five fire dispatchers to enhance our TRV programs and our ability to process the 911 phone calls. The second bullet is, I think, one of the major areas of savings. To maintain our current staffing model with four on the truck, we have... always have at least one paramedic trained. And in the past, we had our paramedic training took place while they were on shift, so we had to backfill their position while they were actually training as well, which ended up costing about $50,000 per trainee. And we've moved towards a model where we've partnered with some of our valley schools and we are actually paying for their training now at the schools. They've made programs for them and it's on their off-time, so it's costing us about $7,500 to $10,000 rather than the $50,000. And based on our actual paramedics that are currently in the drop, our five-year savings over the next five years will be $1.4 million. In addition to that, we have special teams training, which includes hazmat, technical rescue team, airport firefighters, and wildland firefighters. And while that training is significantly less than the paramedic training, we're also trying to partner with some of the schools to see if they can come up with similar programs so that we can find savings in that area as well. And through the savings, we've established... reestablished funding for 10 recruits. Typically, we need more than 10 per year, but the Office of Management and Budget has historically always worked closely with us when we have those needs. And secondly, I wanted to talk to you a little bit about a grant update. We applied for the Healthcare Innovation Grant or the Center for Medicare and Medicaid Services Grants in late August. We actually had a phone conference call with them today, so it's... we think it's moving in a positive direction. If this grant is awarded, the 1415 expectation is about $4.5 million and the three-year expectation is $13.7 million.
Nice.
If the grant is awarded, we're hoping that it'll be in late spring or early summer. Some of our other grants, the total for all of our other expected grants for 1415 are almost $3.5 million. And of these grants included in them is $77,000 for immunizations and 2.9 million for self-contained breathing apparatus or SCBA.
Question for you, Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Just a question with regard to the immunization program. Where do you typically do it these days? I know in the past, it's been Fiesta Mall, have been able to continue that partnership or is it various places throughout the city? If you remember, Chief, how we roll that out.
Dan, do you remember what that is? Mayor can answer that for you. We have Chief Mary Camelli coming to join us.
Councilmember Kavanaugh, members of the council, yes, we are continuing that partnership with Fiesta Mall where we do our immunizations once a month over there as well and have a very good turnout each time.
And those are free to families, correct?
That's correct, free to the public.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Luna.
Yeah.
Do you also do it at the schools? Because I remember going to several schools and getting vaccinated.
Yes, Councilmember Luna, yes, we do continue. Our school program is very, very popular and we immunize between 7,000 and 10,000 students every year, working with the Mesa Public School System, and we have a great partnership with them as well.
And wonderful grant from the Salt River Indian Community. They've been very supportive over the years.
Absolutely. They've helped really sustain the program, money from the county and that grant as well has helped us to sustain the immunization program.
Nice.
I might add too, the status of this program is that it needs to continue based on grants. So, we're very anxious each year as we process these requests and again, some of the support that you've given us, especially through some of the gaming grants, has really been helpful. So, thank you for your support on that.
Sure. Thanks, Mayor.
Any other questions? Tara?
Go ahead and hand it back over to Chief Beck. He's going to talk about community services and enhancements and a CIP update.
We... I mentioned earlier about the TRV program. It's actually... it's moving along quite well, actually. The partnerships that we've put in place, I'm not going to talk about these dot points kind of together. The partnerships that we've had in place have been working out extremely well. It's... as I mentioned, the number of calls we're going on seem to be creeping up, although the amount of time is just 40 hours a week and even that's not consistent. And as you know, we do do peak time staffing, so it's not a 24/7 unit. It's... we've evaluated some of the data we're able to collect to figure out when the best bang for the buck, if you will, or when the service can actually be provided at the highest level and been able to deploy them only in those periods. As you know, that program is managed on an overtime basis and so, as we get close to the end of the fiscal year, we sometimes have to trim that back in order to stay within our budget projections for that particular program. And that's pretty much where we are right now with regard to the TRV program. But when it's in service, it's doing great work for us. One of the things that's evolved over the past year, as you may have heard, this model is pretty popular, not only locally but even around the state and in the country. And sort of the language being developed for this is for units of special nature such as our Behavioral Health Unit and our Nurse Practitioner Unit, beginning to see it being called community care units rather than TRVs, to be a little more descriptive. The TRV units are beginning to be called community paramedic-type response units. And so, we're looking real hard at whether or not to be consistent. We may transition to that same sort of language, but we don't want to create any confusion either with the customers or the responders. So, we're going to be working through some training cycles to see if we can enhance that. As you know, the PA unit is still in service. It's 40 hours a week, as I mentioned. Mountain Vista Hospital is supplying a nurse practitioner, full-time FTE for that program. They are doing absolutely amazing work. Recently, we've given some presentations where we've been able to describe, I guess, a situation that's rather unique in probably any level of business. So, when we describe what we do with our PA unit, essentially what we tell them is that from the time we get there, we are going to make sure that that customer receives the care, the level of care, the appropriate care, timely care that they need, whether... regardless essentially of what we have to do to make that happen. So, we stay with the patient, take them somewhere, pick up their prescription, take them to their family, doctor, whatever we may need to do, even sometimes babysit for a few minutes just so that we can complete that call with a successful outcome. And they were rather impressed that we would actually commit ourselves to a full completion. We don't pass our customers off to the next level where we have the ability to take care of them right there at that time. So, that's really good feedback for us. In our behavioral health, a similar kind of feedback we're getting, as you know, we work with Crisis Prevention and Recovery, which is a local behavioral health company that we've had experience with in the past that also works through Mercy Care or Mercy Maricopa, who have just been outstanding. We have seen remarkable savings in the way we've treated and transported behavioral health patients. Typically, a behavioral health patient stays in an emergency room setting for two to five days at about $2,000 a day. With the way we provide the service with an in-house behavioral health person, we're able to treat the patient, take them directly to the location where they're going to receive the care that they need. So, we expedite that process to get them to the care. They don't sit and wait for somebody. And we can do that with unbelievable savings. We estimate is the actual... the cost for that particular service on that day is about $375 to $390. The healthcare system currently pays over $10,000 for that same and not even for that patient with a much less... much lower level of service. So, we feel confident that at least in... especially in that arena, I should say, we're able to provide a much higher quality of service at a much lower cost. And again, that's creating quite a bit of interest around the community as a model that could work in other places. So, that's pretty exciting. And then, lastly, we've... one of our other partners, AT Steel University, we've been working with for some time to put together and support us with not only dealing with some of the industrial injury processes that we have where they'll actually use some of their students to help us provide physical therapy and ongoing attention to our members so they can actually achieve full recovery before they get back into the strenuous labor that they're involved with, which helps reduce re-injuries, which, as you know, it's even more difficult to recover from a re-injury. So, that process seems to be working well. They're also supporting us by taking a look at the way their curriculum is managed as far as physician's assistance and attempting to modify their programs to allow for firefighters to actually apply for and be accepted to PA school where they would be able to do that in conjunction with their work shifts. So, that's another innovative idea that has been catching on, not only within their company but within their industry. We've had several calls about what the possibilities would be for that being developed to other places. So, we really appreciate the partnerships that we have with this various community organizations and they seem to be being very productive and helpful for us at this point. Other healthcare inquiries are actually almost a daily occurrence. We have met with state Medicaid at their request to discuss the types of services that we're providing and their response has been, when can we do this and can we do a bigger region than just what we're working within the city of Mesa? So... and that they're more than willing to embrace us in this process and assist us actually with acquiring cost recovery capability for some of the services that qualify under the Affordable Care Act or Under Access. So, that's a very positive... well, it's a positive step. Mercy Maricopa is, as you know, the contractor now for behavioral health in place of Magellan. We've met with them at their request, again, they heard about our services with behavioral health. They've taken the same posture. They're excited about what we're doing. They want to be supportive of it. They're asking what they can do to help us and with them in particular and through the Crisis Response Network, which is one of the behavioral health companies locally. We're going to be putting together a program that's an outreach for serious mental ill, seriously mentally ill patients. We're looking at that type of patient that is very difficult for a family to manage. They have anger issues, maybe they have substance abuse problems to go along with their behavioral problems. We would like to begin an education and awareness program where the community can contact us and we can coordinate with Crisis Response Network to provide a professional outlet or to help do an evaluation, even if we don't see the patient, they can at least support the family. I mean, behavioral health patients are the kinds of patients that don't dial 911 because they don't see a need. And others don't dial 911 either because there is no response system that's capable of dealing with emergency... with behavioral health except for in the event of an actual emergency. So, we're going to bridge the gap there and I think we can be... do something much more proactive in terms of dealing with especially people who are on the edge of beginning to act out from lack of treatment, from an illness that hasn't been treated appropriately. So, we're going to try to bridge that gap. And that's another concept that, as we discussed it with the provider, is pretty excited about. They're... they still tend to want to have you make an appointment. We tell them we don't do appointments. We're going to take the service to the street and we'll meet in a coffee shop, we'll meet on a corner, we'll meet in the park, we'll meet wherever we need to at the convenience of the family member who has the concern. So, that's a really... it's going to be a really interesting pilot program that will be kicking off here very soon.
And Chief, just a point there. The amazing effect it has over on the police department, you can imagine they're called in at some of these, you know, very emerging dangerous situations because the situation was allowed to go out of control and we've seen in this community some of the results of that. So, not only is it benefiting the community through the fire department, the police department's having and I think will receive a lot of benefit from that.
Yeah, that's correct, Mayor. And we've received similar feedback from the judge in the courts because they'll have some of the same sort of issues occur as they wait for their hearing. And rather than bringing in a police officer and tying up space in the court until they can be evaluated and transported, we're able to come in, it's kind of low-key, we help them, we take them to a quiet place and then we're able to provide the service. And it does allow the police officers to stay in a position to respond to true emergencies, which has really been the goal of this program all along, is to keep our emergency responders in a position to respond to really high-level emergencies.
Excellent. Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Chief, what I'm hearing you say today really brings it home that, to me, the Center of Innovation in Fire Service in the United States is right here and makes a fire and medical. And I think, you know, we recruited these other liberal arts colleges to come to Mesa. Don't you think the National Fire Service Academy needs to have a Western branch? We can find some space for them because clearly what you're doing here is really, really leading the way in terms of delivery of public safety services and your partnership with the medical community, the mental health care community, with law enforcement is a model that a few other communities have. And so, again, I just want to express that we have all of us, we're very proud of what you and your colleagues are doing. Thank you.
Councilmember Luna.
I want to commend you. I think I'm totally amazed that you provide this kind of service to your community. Good job to you and your staff. I'm... it's amazing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And quite frankly, none of this happens without the partnerships. It's really been an amazing relationship that we've developed and I think as time goes on, the concept of us being... I've referred to us in many ways as being an incubator for these kinds of ideas. And as our relationships build and our successes continue, I think that the concept of being a regional training center isn't very far out of reach, especially when you can bring in people from other disciplines, not just the fire service, who would be interested in setting up partnerships to pull off things similar to what we've done. So, honestly, kudos to the partners who have stepped up and really stuck with us through some of this. So, thank you for that. Then, just very briefly, because I know we're a little short on time. Another aspect of what's evolving here, again, with our... 80% of our business being in emergency medical, is this concept of preventing injuries or preventing 911 calls. Again, consistent with what we've tried to do with our TRV programs, we're looking at implementing some self-help, some prevention and some awareness activities in the community that'll deal more with the emergency medical side of our business. For, if you will, we have a very active fire prevention bureau. Our Public Information Office deals a lot with fire prevention types of information and education. We're going to expand that pretty specifically into some areas with emergency medicine. More specifically, there are a lot of self-help capabilities dealing with potentially diabetes where people can do checks at home, they don't have to wait till they have a catastrophe. So, begin to support that sort of thing, not to mention some of the things that we've done that just make complete sense. As you know, children and seniors are high-risk target groups and so, we have an array of programs from car seats to drowning prevention for children, not so much for the seniors and elderly. So, we're looking at really beefing up some things for fall prevention, kind of house... how to set up your house so that you don't have these issues, even some security issues for the elderly if someone comes to the door at night and knocks, you know, have the ability to have lighting out there and a peephole so that you can see. So, those kinds of things are things that we're trying to grow into. And again, our partnerships are going to be with hospitals for a lot of the medical stuff. Some of them are doing those already. So, any questions on those, the community service and enhancements? Okay. Quickly on a CIP update, as you know, the 2013 Public Safety Bond was approved along with others this past year. Within that project, we received the ability to construct Station 203. Just to give you the most current version of the progress that we've made to this point is that the land purchase contract is currently with the seller. We are waiting for a signature on that contract, so it's really been negotiated and delivered to the seller and they're simply going through the process of determining whether they're going to sign it or not at this point. We will go out for a request for a quote from architects for design within approximately 60 days of signing of the contract. So, we're front-loaded for this process. So, the second that we can lock in the property in real estate tells us that we're pretty close, although we've heard that report before, no reflection on them, but clearly, we have been on and off for a while. So, we're really excited about this particular prospect. Appears it may go through and work out well. On the communications center, we're currently attempting to hire or currently putting out an RFQ to hire an architect to help us do the programming and design phase for the communications center project. We're actually going to do a regional communications center. We're looking at other aspects of that, anywhere from possibly an emergency operating center to potential expansion of some police services to even for... at this point, depending on where we locate it, could potentially be classroom space for some training if it happened to be close to that vicinity. Could work out at Arizona State University Polytech. There's been another area of discussion, so there's been a lot of work and discussion and speculation on this and we're looking forward to making some decisions and moving this forward. The burn rooms, as you may be aware, as part of our training program, we don't actually take firefighters in there to burn them. What we... we set things on fire to burn and then we expose them to the heat and the temperature and a very... we expose them to the heat and the temperature in a very safe environment. We have no injuries at our training systems. Did I say that? But really, it's very, very safe. We're very, very conscious of this. And in fact, it's one of the reasons we requested council to approve this item for bond is because one of those burn rooms is really destroyed to the point where we're not going to be able to do Class A combustibles. We plan to repair it and use it for other lower, lower-scale types of fires, but then we're also going to build a new burn room that can be able to, you know, sustain a regular working fire environment. So we appreciate that. We're just months away from getting a contract cut for that, that process to begin. As you know, replacement of our apparatus is an ongoing issue for us. We've adjusted the replacement schedule several times over the years, trying to make the most. We really have to praise Larry LaBarba for, and his staff of maintenance engineers in maintaining our fire trucks. As you know, fire trucks have to be maintained at 100% at all, all the time. We cannot afford a failure in that process. So they've done a great job and they've also extended the life of the apparatus to the extent that we've been able to keep trucks well beyond the manufacturer's recommended mileage, and we feel that we've done that in a very safe manner. But it does come a time to replace, so you'll be seeing in this next coming year, the rest of this fiscal year, some requests to purchase additional fire apparatus. And then finally, as part, again, of the bond package, we were able to acquire some funding to extend fiber cabling to all of our facilities. As you know, some years ago, we cut our overtime budget significantly and redesigned our training system to almost eliminate overtime as far as a general training program goes. On the backbone of having a teleconferencing system that could help us do, tele, use technology to do the training, classroom-type training. So we're just now getting to the point where we're going to have that fiber to extend it to, I think, two or three more facilities. Two, two, two or three of the, the last two or three facilities, including a couple of fire stations that haven't had access to that. So that's really going to support the, the transition we've made. Up until now, we've had to move a few companies around to participate in that, which kind of defeats the purpose a little bit, but by and large, it's been quite a savings, and I think it's actually enhanced the training. It's, I think we're doing, even doing a better job. And then just finally, as you know, growth continues to be a major issue for us, and thanks to the, to the work of this council and, and all the innovations that have come forward, especially in the area of economic development, we, we know that, you know, it's exciting to think that Mesa could reach in the next level of its potential over these next couple of years. It's absolutely amazing, but as, but comes with growth, growth comes additional service demands. We know in our northeast and southeast corners of the city that, that's been an ongoing dynamic. We don't, we expect that to continue on. And so we will continue to be looking for what the call volume growth is in those areas and our response times. And although we won't have any resource to deal with it exactly this year or within this bond cycle, it is something that, as you know, it's like fire trucks, it's something we continuously look at and try to plan for. And then finally, technology and information management is a, is a key issue for us, really across the board. Some of the stuff I talked about with the TRV program, a lot of that is predicated on our ability to demonstrate with statistical data what our performance levels are. Unless we have the ability to collect that data and crunch it in a way that meets the requirements, we can't qualify for cost recovery. So that's just another reason on top of just being able to deploy the system, deploy the units the way we need to, that information management becomes and continues to be key for us. So we'll be continuing to work on that, and you may see some projects come your way this year with that as well. So with that, I'll close. Are there any questions?
Any questions for the chief? Thank you, sir. It's exciting to see what's going on, the innovation. We appreciate what you and all of your staff and all the members of the Mesa Fire and Medical Department do. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is to hear reports on meetings or conferences attended. Mr. Ca, uh, Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, when we lured Apple to Mesa, we, we thought we would get a lot of other businesses and vendors that, that wanted to work with them, and I know that our economic development staff is working hard on that, but we also sometimes get some unanticipated results. So I want to comment on a business opening that I went to on Friday for another famous resident of San Francisco Oakland area, the Bay Area, Ike's Place. Ike's Place is a, is a cult favorite restaurant in the San Francisco Oakland area that has opened its first restaurant in Arizona in Mesa at 11:30 West Grove in the Fiesta District. And Ike flew in on Allegiant Air to Gateway and told me that one of the reasons they located here is they said, people who work at Apple eat at our places, and Apple located in Mesa, we want to be in Mesa. And so it's, he was, and he also mentioned that, that he likes the idea of the Oakland A's moving into Ho-Com Stadium, and is certainly willing to negotiate with Mr. Brady on having some concession space at that stadium. So, but it's, it was, it was a great opening with Sally Harrison in the Chamber of Commerce and a lot of, a lot of buzz. If you look on Yelp, I've never seen as many five-star reviews for a place in, in such a long time. So it's another fruit of our association with Apple.
Love it. Thank you. Others? No? Uh, Mr., Councilmember Richardson?
Yeah, I didn't know whether to make a comment during the chief's remarks or now, so I decided for now, but Chief Blumer and I went to the Town of Superior last Thursday where a fire truck was presented to the Town of Superior, and they were, it was presented with much fanfare. They were thrilled about having it. In fact, as I've been around town, they keep driving it around in laps around the town. I think they, they drive around town, go back to fire stations, switch drivers, and then drive it some more. They're really excited, and I also understand it was featured today in the Little League Opening Ceremonies Parade today. So it's been a very exciting thing for them, for a community that's really kind of been challenged in several ways and had a fire truck that actually broke down, so they had no extra backup. And so, but again, it goes to reinforce what was presented by the chief, by Chief Beck about how well those trucks are maintained, that even after 200,000 miles, it's still better than, than what they've had, and, and they're really excited to have it. And I, one of the things I asked them during the presentation was to let us know when they take care of the first Mesa resident with that truck, because undoubtedly, all the people that drive through that community will take care, and hopefully it won't be anything serious. Thank you, Mesa Fire and Medical.
Nice, very nice. Mr. Brady, scheduling of meetings?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder, we have our next study session this Thursday, April 24th at 7:30 a.m. May for the last time a reminder of the Mesa Council's on college free screening of the first-generation film, which will be this Wednesday, April 23rd, at the Mesa Arts Center and the Piper Theater. I know there's some booths and things that'll start out at, I think the doors open at 6, but there's a 5:30 booths are there for, for students that are coming, but the doors open at 6:00 p.m. Film begins at 6:30 p.m. Also, this Friday, Councilmember Luna will be having another Luna Landing from 7:30, 8:30 at the Sunnyside Breakfast Lounge, 2823 North Power Road. And he will have a special guest, guest? Guest? Our Economic Development Director, Bill Jepiniac, and Parks and Recreation Commercial Facilities Director, Mark Hirschberg will be talking about their upcoming, or current projects in District 5. And then also this weekend, or this Saturday, April 26th from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m., we'll have a Celebrate Mesa Free Event at Pioneer Park. So invite everybody out there this Saturday from 2:00 to 6:00. Thanks.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Brady. If there's no other information, I'll take a motion for adjournment. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. We're adjourned.